Chairman Giltner?
Yes.
Thank you.
Next item is approval of final decisions or findings of fact. We don't have any this month. Next on the agenda is receipt of appearances. So for anyone who wishes to speak, if you could be sworn in. Next up is receipt of requests, motions, pleadings, or requests to make public comment of a general nature. I understand there is someone here who would like to make a public comment. Is that correct? Great.
Hi, my name is Greg Peters. I'm at 118 Fuller Road in Hinsdale. I'm the mystery Greg Peters because it was made apparent that I haven't shown up for meetings that I didn't realize I needed to come before the board to follow up with my note to the village. But again, good evening to you all. Again, my name is Greg Peters and my wife and I have lived at 118 Fuller Road here in Hinsdale for thirty-five years now, longer than anybody else on the block, by year, only by year. And it was brought to my attention, as I mentioned, that my name was mentioned at zoning board meeting last month on the situation at one ten East Ogden Avenue regarding my neighbors who back up to the property and Dr. Cara Hartman, who is building, built the addition on top of the building and building into a chiropractic business there. After watching the replay last, the last meeting, I was kind of surprised by her comments, which is why I'm here tonight. First, because, you know, Dr. Cara, she acted as though she didn't know who I was, when in fact, my entire family has been patients of hers even before she went on loan from a practice in Westmore. We supported her. I personally recommended her to doctors in the area for her services. I've recruited equipment for her. My wife has conducted marketing, consulting for her. And I've even invited her to come to our church because many of the members were also patients of hers. So, gotta tell you, it really kind of hurts, but I had to spread that out because I was looking forward to visiting this new facility that she's going to open this summer because it really sounded like it was going to provide an expanded line of services that she didn't have, and I was really looking forward to it. So, you can understand why it hurts me a lot because your trust a doctor act as though they didn't even know you and suggested that it was sort of making noise and somehow trying to impede her business. It seemed very cold calculated, unprofessional, and frankly, very insulting. So, my email that I actually wrote to the village way back in February twelfth of, this is two thousand twenty, that Cara dramatically called out here at your meeting, it was not a fluke or just making noise. It was, if she would just, had really conducted some simple research, she would have known that the neighbors, Mike Cune being one of them right here as well, on Fuller Road, we really stick together and past issues and, you know, potentially any issue that would affect our families, our homes, or our home values. Collectively, we prevented the business to the east of her at one twenty East Ogden from creating an egress egress out of their parking lot onto our neighborhood street, which would have cost tens of thousands of dollars in our opinion in property value. With the help of the village manager, and I'm sure Robert, you were involved as well, McGinnis, and the rest of the staff, an amended ordinance was adopted preventing this from happening in not only our backyard, but neighborhoods throughout Hinsdale adjacent to businesses. I think you all remember that. In talking about the proposed property improvements at one ten East Ogden with my neighbors who border that property, as we casually do, we talk about situations in a neighborhood. There were many concerns way back when, when I sent this email, that there would be an egress, ingress, egress into that property as well at one ten. We wanted to sort of prevent that from people coming in through the neighborhood. I offered to write an email to, you know, the village staff, just sharing our concerns, and I've done it many times in the past, and it represented the collective thoughts of our neighbors. Some of the neighbors, not all, but just some of them, mainly with Stavers and Mike Cune. In the fluke email reference, I had suggested that the PVC fence that was completed, completed between Stavers Yard and one twenty East Ogden, who, they did a great job putting in this beautiful white PVC fence. And that was discussed during meetings about fencing to separate the businesses along Ogden from access to Fuller Road from their parking lot at one twenty East Ogden, which was Hinsdale Associates, if you know the building.
That's the two-story or three-story office building?
Yeah, it's the long red roof that everybody cuts through their parking lot. Should cut through the tree line. So, we, my email served more of a reminder to the staff and the planning commission that this topic was a concern in the recent past for not only Fuller Road, but also for Franklin Street and for those homes that were adjacent Land Rover, which we remember very well, that whole situation. And as you all know, that Land Rover did put up a beautiful wall and fence, you know, combination as a result. And everybody seems to be happy. Aside from screening and noise, one of our main issues is also safety. Keeping people from straggling off Ogden Avenue and wandering through our block. There have been escalated incidents of property damage, robberies, and even, you know, recently, I think within the last year, that drawn gun part chase that they wandered off of Ogden into that neighborhood by Franklin. So, we've had a lot of this happen, a lot of these, you know, crimes happen right off of Ogden Avenue with the adjacent neighborhoods to the businesses. One of the most recent was a burglary actually that occurred, I think it's the day after this meeting last month in the two hundred block of Fuller. And a line of trees just is not a deterrent for nefarious folks from passing through and onto Fuller Road. So, with the reply from the village, passing our concerns that I presented in my email to the appropriate parties, the fence drawings and Cara's packet submitted to the ZBA and conversations with my neighbors, I understood that Cara had mentioned in the past meetings that a fence was part of her site plan. And there was really no reason for me to attend another meeting as our concerns seemed to have been met. And so, that was that. That's why I never really appeared in that. So, now looking closer at what has been represented on page forty-eight of her packet that she submitted to you all. It looks like a nice addition to some of the existing tree line, but there appeared to be no consideration to a fence other than the artist's conception. I repeat, a nice addition to the existing tree line. We certainly in no suggest, in no way suggested that the contractor cut down the existing trees, you know, buffer that was on the Stavers and Cune's property, which now does sort of affect our property because now we can hear more traffic than ever, which we didn't before. And we're, and in the winter, obviously, we'll just see straight through to buildings that we never saw before. So, I was also made aware of a letter on March twentieth of two thousand twenty-two from Mr. McGinnis to Cortland LLC, where you pointed out the mess of confusion of, and if I'm paraphrasing, let me know, but the mess of confusion that was promised, what was in the packet and what damage has occurred since removing that tree line. I also believe that this letter seemed to explain the frustration of the village leading to Mr. McGinnis to state that, and quote it toward the end of his letter, it says, "It is necessary for the property owner to seek a major adjustment to the exterior appearance slash site plan review for the landscaping and fencing in order to give the trustees an opportunity to comment on what is actually being proposed and to clarify what landscape and fencing is necessary." And to, so here we are today. I mean, we, we've had, there were, there was a meeting last night with the Board of Trustees where President Tom Colley, now had, had a very heated meeting last night, stated loud and clear to all to hear that the occupancy permit will not be issued until this has all been resolved to my neighbors' satisfaction. Our home at one eighteen Fuller is elevated. We overlook the property of the Cunes and the Stavers, so we see right through everything else, second floor level on their side. So, yes, we're affected by a large gap in the trees that were removed and that the noise from Ogden Avenue. And as you know, that most people who buy homes here, you know, buying for the trees, they buy them because you're not looking at a highway, you're not looking at Ogden Avenue, and it's kind of a turnoff. So, there's only a sixty-foot opening between the PVC fences, and it's approximate, it's very close to that, between the Stavers Yard and Hinsdale Associates, both of them being, I believe, the same model of white PVC fence. That could have been constructed early on, and if they had not cut down the Stavers trees, the Stavers and Cune's trees, this would have been a non-issue at this point. No discussion would have been needed. It would have been a very nice look for both sides of the fence, and it was sealed off Ogden from our homes on Fuller and would not have escalated the situation that we have today. So, now, if there was any reason for me to appear to any of your meetings, forgive me for just not showing up and assuming so, I was never notified, nor were there any concerns. Dr. Cara never called me. And the village never asked me to appear, so that's why I haven't shown up. It's not that it didn't concern me at this point and I was just making noise. None of that, none of that. So, in summary, if Dr. Cara, if Cara Hartman and her development team would have knocked on my neighbors' doors to introduce this project personally and acted as fellow neighbors, I know things would have worked a lot different because I know these people. I've lived, I've lived across the street from them for many, many, many years. We have a short block on Fuller Road and we're up by the cemetery, but we are a, you know, abandoned group of neighbors who we look out for each other. We support each other as well as those neighbors on, to the east of us, who along the, also share similar situations with the Ogden Avenue business district being their back door. We support our neighbors on a number of issues to protect us from anything that will destroy the beauty, harmony we call home. We are nice, friendly people, friendly neighbors, and we like, just don't like being bullied by any business who disrespects our concerns for the safety concern for our neighborhood. So, I know you all understand my concerns and those of my neighbors. And I hope that the next plan includes a continuation of a fence, properly dense screening, and have the contractor pay to restore the twenty-foot mature tree lines that they've cut down from Mike and Stavers Yard. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. I'd suggest just having a copy of that just available and just maybe distribute it to the board.
I can give it to you now.
Oh, you need copies?
I did make copies, but I made it easier.
Maybe electronically is better.
Oh, you want me to do electronically? I can send it to you electronically if you want. What's that? Sure, okay. I made notes on there, so.
And so, we have a, we have a meeting next month where that case is going to be discussed, updates. So, encourage you to attend.
Sure, if I can be there next month, I will be there. And I apologize because in the packet, it said, Dr. Hartman, it said that I, you know, I caused this meeting to be delayed two or three times, and I had no clue that you were waiting for me.
We weren't. It wasn't us.
I think she was talking about plan commission.
She was talking about plan commission.
Oh. That, okay.
So, the burden's on the applicant, not on the neighbors. So, I don't think you-
It's not a neighbor's now anymore, yeah.
Okay. It's only, actually, in every case, it's on the applicant to prove hardship. Every case is on the applicant to, you know, you make their case and, you know, with or without neighbors input. But that's usually, it's welcomed by this group because we like to know what the folks are thinking.
Absolutely, and I appreciate you all taking the time because I, I mean, I know this has been painful for you all. And it just when my name was brought up, I just wanted to make sure you knew my side. I wasn't trying to stop any business. We were looking forward to it. And, and I'm assuming I'm correct, that no contact has been made to Mike or the Stavers. And again, I'm not going to door, I know these days it's kind of weird, nobody answers their door. But still, if you just reached out and said, hey, let's talk, this is what we're going to be doing. Because I know Audio Consultants has been away forever, that building's been vacant for years. So, that's how long it's been there, it was actually open, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any questions? Okay, great. Thank you so much.
You're so welcome. And apologies for being a little bit passionate.
No worries. No worries.
Thanks for hearing me.
Yep, thank you. So, next item on the agenda is pre-hearing and agenda setting. We don't have any for this month. Next item is public hearing. Two public hearings. I did want to mention that we have six members tonight. And just like last month, right, we were giving, giving the applicants the option to defer if they choose to, to make sure that there's a full, you know, full number of members. It doesn't mean that next month we will have all seven, but just remember, in order for your application to be approved, it requires four affirmative votes regardless of how many people are on the board for the meeting.
Can I put this to a boil? I'm on the spot. Given your twenty minutes, ten, you're on the zoning board. I mean, do you feel comfortable voting on these or would you want to abstain?
I'm not going to abstain. I've taken the time and I want, you know, all here who are presenting tonight for public hearings to know that I have taken the time to read the minutes and watched all of the videos with regard to any discussion or presentations made on your matters. So, I feel fully rested of the situations at hand and happy to vote on those.
So, with that, do you intend to move forward? So, first, a public hearing is V dash zero-three, twenty-two, nine thirty-three South Grant Street. So, if you can just give a high-level summary?
Yeah, sure. Again, my, my name's Nathan Lockt. I'm one of the two owners of the house. My fiancee, Molly Painter, is out of town. She couldn't, she couldn't be here. Recall, we're requesting a variance that will allow us to have more than twenty feet of driveway. And, you know, this exceeds the village maximum of twenty feet for a lot our size. Recall also, please, the, the reason we're requesting the variance is because of a safety issue living on our, that living on our block presents. We live on one of the busiest streets in Hinsdale on Grant Street, you know, twice a day at least and during the morning and afternoon rushes around Hinsdale Central. And then it's also obviously one of the main north-south rural fairs for the, for the south side of the village. And one where people come off of Fifty-Fifth Street, you know, at a high rate of speed regularly. And we're the, we're the second house in from the corner and backing out of our driveway with the current configuration, which is often required, really often isn't possible in the mornings or in the afternoons due to there being cars in kind of both lanes of the right lane of the road. There's a turn lane and then a normal, normal lane. And then with all of the traffic coming on Fifty-Fifth, you just can't get out of the back, you can't get out of the, you can't get out of the driveway. You know, indeed, this is a safety issue that we're trying to, trying to solve for with that. I wanted to address during the last meeting, we ended up spending, I think, a little bit more time than I would have liked talking about the number of new drivers or the number of drivers that there are at the house between the size of our family and our nanny and visitors and workers with vans, et cetera. And while that's true, we're not looking to solve for a parking issue in, in any way. Rather, it's just purely the safety issue in and around Grant, or that Grant Street presents. To, to just refresh everybody's memory on the property, we have three full grown trees in the front yard that limit where we can place the, the circle driveway. Those are all healthy trees and nothing wrong with them. There's no on-street parking allowed on Grant Street on either side of the road. So, having that kind of parking option isn't, isn't, isn't there at all. There's no sidewalk on our side of the street. There is on the other side of the street. And Mr. McGinnis, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think the discussion last time was that there's no plans or intentions for there to be a sidewalk on our side, which is the east side of, of Grant Street there on, on the nine hundred block of, of South Grant. So, with that, then, there's no discernible lot line really where, where our property ends and the village property begins. It, it all appears and frankly functions as, as our yard. The variances needed to allow for the turning radius required for the driveway, just that, you know, coming in and then making that, what would be a left turn to go over to the main driveway, we need to have a little bit of a, you know, a little extra concrete there because obviously car can't make a ninety-degree turn, otherwise we would have been fine. You know, to put the variance in context, really what we're asking for is a variance for like twenty-one square feet of concrete. And if you were to even move this kind of somewhat imaginary lot line, because there's no sidewalk, three feet closer, we'd be talking about like less than five square feet of concrete that, that the whole, whole project would, would present. And so, coming out of the last meeting, there were a few questions that, that the board collectively asked of me. And it gets down to the sections of the application. Forgive me, I don't have all the vernacular right. You know, section four, I guess, the standards for variation, there are seven standards that, that, that must be met. And while I'm happy to discuss any and all of them, I think that there's three that are probably most on your mind based on the last, the last discussion. The first one, part D, not merely special privilege. Again, this is about addressing a safety issue for my family and for visitors and providing them the ability to drive out of the driveway facing forward. Indeed, it's something that seven other homes right on my block, the nine hundred block of, of South Grant Street, already have. And I brought a couple of exhibits to share. Maybe what I'll, I'll do is give these, I'm going to keep one for myself. Questions?
Sure.
I hope there's enough. If there's not, I'll give you my copy. Did I continue or?
Yeah.
Okay. So, the first one is a summary of research that was done by the University of Minnesota. And, and there's more studies than this. This was one that actually had a singular page that was captured it pretty nicely. But this research, research shows that twenty-five percent or one in four accidents involve backing up. And you'll see, I kind of circled the relevant area on the, on the page. And if you consider that the average driver drives less than one mile per year backwards, but drives over twelve thousand miles in total, one twelve thousand of all of the driving causes one quarter of all of the accidents that there are. So, it's, again, with us backing out every day, it, onto such a busy street in, in Grant Street, it, I think that, that probably increases our likelihood quite a bit. The second exhibit is a letter that, that our next-door neighbors to our north wrote for us. And, you know, it, it supports our request and they also have a circle driveway. And, you know, they're, they, they talk about in the letter, a lot of the things that I just touched on around high rates of speed, the danger of backing out, all of the traffic with Hinsdale Central, et cetera, et cetera. I won't, I won't read the letter unless you'd like me to, but that, that's what that, that captures in essence. And then a, a third thing that I wanted to, to bring up around this, this point, not merely special privileges, is that the, the ZBA actually approved a, a variance for my across-the-street neighbor that allowed them to have a circle driveway. Slightly different circumstance and variance. It was, their lot line wasn't quite, or their lot wasn't quite wide enough to have the twenty feet, it was only a few feet short. But there was a variance granted that enabled them to have a circle driveway. And I don't know all the details of that case, but I presume it was for similar reasons around safety and things like that. And resulted in the same outcome of having a, a circle driveway. The next point that I was going to address was around no other remedy. And this is one, as, as we discussed during the last meeting, there is potentially another remedy that would push the driveway much further back, closer back, and push it closer to the house and, and our garage. However, this would increase the amount of new concrete required, reduce the amount of grass that we have in the yard, and force us to tear up existing hardscaping that's already in place in our, in our stone sidewalk as well as landscaping that there is on both the front and back sides of that, of that hardscaping in the, you know, in our, in our yard. So, there is potentially another remedy, but one that doesn't go without its, its trade-offs that, that I just described. And then part F, which I think is a, an important one, which is essential character of the area. And there's multiple parts to that, and I'm addressing two of them, but I can talk about more. Part three is around congestion. And rather than increase congestion, I actually think it would decrease congestion due to the cars not having to back out of the driveway. Like if we can come out straight, we're just in the flow of traffic right away rather than having to back out, stop, put the car back in gear, and then go about our way. And really, in the morning, the only way that you're, that we're able to go is to head north because to head south, like you just, you can't, you can't possibly back out in all of that traffic that, that is on the east side of the street there. And then part six is it would increase public safety in my, my obviously biased opinion as a, reduce the risks of traffic accidents for the same reasons that I, that I've just touched on. And again, I draw your attention to this study and there's other similar out there. That's kind of what I have for you guys.
While we're on the standards, does anyone have questions about either the standards that the applicant addressed or did not address? Any other questions for the applicant? Okay, all right. Thank you. So, we'll go ahead and open up for deliberation.
We have a motion to close the public hearing, please.
Motion to close the public hearing. Second. You want to sum move?
Ah, so moved.
Second.
Thank you. Member Moberly?
Yes.
Member O'Brien?
Yes.
Member Murphy?
Yes.
Member Lee?
Yes.
Member Felizca?
Yes.
Chairman Giltner?
Yes.
Anyone want to start?
Well, I'm okay with it. We've granted, I was on the board when we granted this, this variance for the, the house across the street. I think we granted one on Washington as well. This is, we've had several, at least two others.
Garfield too.
Garfield, that's it, that's it. So, I was over there yesterday at ten till five. So, the school was even in session now, and I, I tried to stop though, look how wide your driveway was. And I was almost run over from all directions because there's so many, so, so much traffic there. I think maybe some of it's because Garfield's under construction, so you're getting even more traffic at this time because that, a lot of that shut down. So, I think it, you meet the standards, I think it's necessary. And I don't think it has anything to do with how many cars you've got. It's just, it's impossible to back out onto that location.
I, I agree. This clearly is a unique physical condition that we're dealing with here, and it's not, certainly not self-created. So, I would be in favor of granting the variance.
Anyone else have any comment? Yeah, also, I, I don't know if this was brought up today, but there's no parking on Grant Street. So, not only for the applicant's family, but also for visitors. There, they would be required to back out, and I think that also is a safety issue. Okay. Any other comments? Otherwise, do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve?
Yep.
Motion to close the hearing.
Oh, sorry.
I was in the motion to approve.
A second for the motion? Roll call.
Member Moberly?
Yes.
Member O'Brien?
Yes.
Member Murphy?
Yes.
Member Lee?
Yes.
Member Felizca?
Yes.
Chairman Giltner?
Yes.
Thank you.
Sure. I'll just step off just so it's recorded.
Sorry, I couldn't come last month because I had COVID, but we're getting married in a month and we may not be able to pull the project off now this summer. Does that create a problem if we end up doing it next year?
No, it doesn't. In fact, you can pull a permit this year. It permits good for a year.
Okay.
Or you can wait. It's just work needs to start within twelve months from the date of the final decision, which technically won't happen until next month.
Okay.
You've got time.
Okay, thanks so much.
Thank you very much. L-U-C-H-T. Thank you very much. All right, next on the agenda is V dash zero-one, twenty-two, drive twenty-seven, five forty-one, Kensington.
Hi, I'm Julie from J. Jordan, if you guys don't remember from the other Kensington vendor. This is Tom Jackson, my attorney from Petroni Keeley. Patrick Portelka apologizes he had car issues and couldn't be here tonight, so we're doing it without him. We're requesting a variance. We've been here several months in a row. We have changed our plan based on the conversations that we've had at previous meetings. We have opened the gate, and by definition, it is open now with the change in design. I believe that we're down to asking for the variance for the height of the, the walls that are adjacent to the gate. We, Tom is going to go over the standards and why, how we have addressed this in relation to the standards. And the overreaching idea is that we're looking at a very unattractive. And the overreaching idea is that we're looking at a very unattractive commercial property from a residential standpoint, so.
Good evening. Tom Jackson, again, for J. Jordan.
Just make sure you're, the mic's picking you up there.
Sure. Again, Tom Jackson for J. Jordan. And I know that the various conditions for approval were laid out in the application under Sections 4 and 5, so I don't necessarily want to read through them and just repeat all that's said, but I thought I'd take the opportunity to kind of address some of the more critical ones, and based on my review of the previous meeting, some of the issues or concerns that the board had raised.
Yeah, that'd be helpful, and then if there are questions about the ones that you don't address, we'll ask them.
Absolutely. So, with respect to the standards pursuant to 11-503F, with respect to the unique condition, again, unlike most of the Hinsdale residents, the residents that would be living in the subject property would have a fairly unattractive view of a commercial parking lot directly across the street. So, this is, the variance request that isn't merely for inconvenience purposes, and, again, it's a limited variance request that J. Jordan has reduced based on your suggestions and requests, the solid portion of the fence, the brick fence, the 6 feet. And if you look at the renderings, the solid fence is really only for approximately 25 to 30 feet facing Monroe on either side of the driveway fence or gate, and it transitions, then, to an open 6-foot fence. With respect to the other condition, J. Jordan isn't seeking a special privilege because it's only seeking to provide the homeowners an appropriate suburban residential view similar to what most other Hinsdale residents have. This is not providing the homeowners for this property any special uses, it's not providing them any special, or different materials for the fencing. This is a brick fence, kind of standard materials that are used certainly in most of the homes in Hinsdale. The variance will also be in harmony with respect to the code, the village code and the fence ordinance. It's consistent with architectural designs for suburban communities such as Hinsdale. Again, as I said, it's a brick fence. It's the same material used to build many of the homes in Hinsdale. It's not radically different in material, it's not inferior certainly, and it certainly won't impair the values of other homes in Hinsdale. It also assists to transition the property from a commu-, residential to the commercial property that's across the street. And certainly...
The brick fence is only going to be for a limited area, and as the rendering shows, there can be certainly some landscaping to soften the brick fence that is there. With respect to the no other remedy condition, again, J. Jordan is only seeking a 4-foot additional height on the brick fence, and this is really the only effective way to provide the adequate view, or appropriate view, for residents in such a community, so that they're not looking at a bunch of cars parked in a commercial parking lot. We would submit that landscaping really isn't the answer, because you're going to have different plants, whether they're going to survive, how long they're going to survive. They can't cross the street. So, really, the fence, the brick fence is the, is a permanent solution, it's an attractive solution, and it provides the remedy, which is avoiding the inappropriate view. As to the standards for Section 12-3J, the fence ordinance, again, I've talked about the unique condition and the location. The hardship is the owner's views of, again, looking at a commercial parking lot, and we don't believe that this is going to provide any unfavorable precedent. The brick fence has been lowered to 6 feet. Is it, again, only for a limited length, this 25 to 30 feet on either side of the gate, and it transitions, then, to an open 6-foot fence? We believe that, based on that, this requested variance does meet the standards under both Sections 4 and 5 of the application.
Is the brick painted white, or is it sort of a blond brick?
The brick, I guess I would correct the word painted, so we use a mineral. Paint will flake off of brick, but we use a product called Ramabio, which is a mineral-based application, so that it stays.
So, it'll look good for many, many, will the application ever need to be reapplied?
So, there are a lot of houses in town that have it, and it actually fades off a little bit, which is an attractive look. So, it's meant to look like it was there, not like fresh and new. It's not just regular paint.
So, this brick wall, just to focus on the brick wall for now, not the gate?
Right.
So, this brick wall, you're asking for 4 additional feet, because it's a closed fence, correct?
That's correct.
And if I got, if I understood correctly, you'd mentioned that landscaping was sort of a less desirable alternative, because it's maybe, you know, it's, just one second, it's maybe not as permanent as a brick wall. Can you address the, you know, the fact that, you know, a brick wall that's 4 feet higher than what's allowed in any other part of town is more desirable than landscaping? Just because the gates, the cul-de-sacs, the things that I've seen have shown landscaping, which, over time, just seems to make it much, you know, fit into the community much, much better.
And so, we believe that the solid wall, the gate will slide behind the solid wall, and it needs a place to live. So, you know, when the gate is open, it has to live somewhere, so it lives behind that wall.
That's one part of the fence, that I'm not even sure if that's the only solution, but what about all the other parts of the brick wall that's 4 feet higher, that I'm just thinking, oh, you know, landscaping, that's a great option for screening? Because I recall your, your primary focus that you've mentioned today is the unattractive view.
That's correct.
I mean, one could argue, I'm not, it's not my property, but a brick wall is not nearly as attractive as landscaping. From the outside, that would be my opinion, from the inside, maybe even.
And I guess, in my perspective, we always use a layered approach, so we, you know, even if we have a fence, we layer in front of it with other plantings, that it provides a nice backdrop and tidies up the whole look of things. And, you know, landscaping is great, and maybe it will grow to be a solid hedge at some point, but then one dies, and you can never catch it up, and I feel like it's never as consistent of a look.
I just, I don't want to dwell on this, but, I mean, I've looked at anything like the Woodgate property, the Gateway property, that's just in Oak Brook, all of those, and really, any other entrance that's been around for more than, I don't know, 10 years. Landscaping is, I don't see plants die, I don't see hedges dying, it just is well-maintained. I mean, that's a choice, I think, for the owners. So, I'm just struggling with, if the purpose is for screening, landscaping eventually overtakes a wall, right? If it's done properly. You won't, you won't even see the wall. On some of these other properties, I don't, you often don't even see any of the fencing that's behind the landscaping, which is kind of nice, I mean, in my opinion. So, I'm just struggling with the, you know, addressing the unattractive view by building a wall, you know, a wall that is very permanent, it's very visible, 4 feet higher than any other wall that's in the village.
And we planned a landscape in front of it. We, you know, we were asked to put 3-foot arboribides in front, which is what I'm showing in the rendering. We think this is a very tidy look for Monroe, and we're next to a school and across from a commercial property, which we think this is the tidiest look, both inside and out.
And I will speak from experience, because I'm dealing with some dead bushes in my backyard. There are, there will be some difficulties, even with just planning a hedge, because you never know if the hedge is going to survive, and here you have a...
I'm struggling with that argument. I'm, I hate to, I'm sorry to interrupt, but, I mean, it's landscaping. Everyone has landscaping in their property. If one happens to die, you replace it. It's just, anyhow.
But if you're, if you're truly growing a hedge, if one dies, that one will look out of sorts for a long time. It will, so.
The 2 homes that face Monroe, they're 2 stories or more, right?
Yes.
And you've got windows up there on the second story? So, that view is still going to be an open view into the parking lot, even with the 6-foot wall, right?
That's correct.
Okay. Because I agree here that the landscaping that would be border evergreens, there are places around town where you can see those border evergreens, they grow well over 6 feet. In fact, they're probably twice that high, that they might actually eventually obscure the view of the parking lot for those 2 homes, even from the second floor.
Yeah, I doubt from the second floor, because that's one of our issues, is that the topography is such that in the 8 lots, they're far higher than the street level. So, I have to get, you know...
You're going to be able to get, with the evergreens, you would be able to get a growth that would be substantially more than the 6 feet we're struggling with for the wall. In fact, probably twice that. I know places around the village where the trees are easily 10 or 12 feet tall, and I think that's the problem I'm having with the, with the requirement that we find that there's no other effective remedy for what we're trying to address. Just to be clear, this is 6-foot fence, all total?
It's a 6-foot fence and a 6-foot wall. They're both 6 feet.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, it's not like, you say 4 feet taller than any fence in town. I mean, there's lots and lots of 6-foot fences in town. This is just a corner side yard. I've got, I've got a 6-foot, I've got hundreds of feet of 6-foot fence.
It's not in the front of your property.
Right, right.
That's the difference. That's why there's, the code says 2 feet of a closed fence in front of a property. That's the difference.
Right. But to make this like a compound, to make this walled, there's not much choice. I mean, you can't, a 2-foot fence isn't going to cut it. You're not going to be, I mean, you can put all the trees you want, it's not going to be like a compound. People can walk right off of Ogden, step right through the trees. It's, I mean, it, we're talking about something very different here. I mean, we got to, I mean, maybe we don't want to do it, but, but it's, it's very different than the other examples that we're talking about.
Right. I mean, I don't, I just, I didn't know the goal was to make this into a compound. I think that's one option, but that's, that's, in my opinion, I think that's the opposite of what, I think, is the character of the area.
Well, there's no... To put a gate, I mean, you can't put a, I mean, a 2-foot gate's not going to work, right? You're going to have it...
And I believe that the gate can be, the gate is not the issue, the height of the gate can be the same, it's just the walls, right?
How high can the gate be?
6.
I believe it's 8, actually.
8.
8.
The gate itself can be 8. There's just nothing for it to go behind, but it's got to, the gate...
So, even if the gate is open, I'm going to have 8 feet on either side, and the gate would remain open during most of the day.
But what's next to it is going to be a 2-foot fence, is that right?
Without the variance, that's correct.
Right. Without the variance, they'd have an 8-foot tall fence, or 8-foot tall gate that slides behind...
And the columns to support it.
Slide, yeah.
And then you'd have to drop down to 2 feet solid. Correct.
And this is just a practical observation, but if, even if you're putting landscaping, if you're going to have a that's permitted to open, you'd have to put the landscaping well in front of that, because if it's going to get tall enough, it's going to get wide, too. And you, I think you'd end up having to put the landscaping well in front of the driveway gate.
And, you know, as I've told you guys in the past, my contract to purchase this property is contingent of this variance, and I don't know if this is appropriate to say, but I think the plan that I'm putting forth for the neighborhood is good for the village, and I think this is a critical part of that plan.
We'll give you 90 seconds to sell us. Your homes, I mean, I know you weren't prepared necessarily to discuss this, but what, I'm thinking of, if we say no to this and one of your competitors takes over, how will your houses, your product, be better than, I can think of 2 of your competitors, I don't want to give them any publicity here tonight, but you probably are thinking of the same ones. How will your product be better? How will your houses be better? How will it enrich the neighborhood more?
So, I don't think any of my competitors, to use your word, are interested in this property. So, this is well outside of what a residential Hinsdale builder does. They don't build subdivisions. Taking myself way outside of what's expected, but I know that I will beautify the neighborhood tremendously from, right now, it looks horrendous, and my development will beautify it. I am still sworn to secrecy, but if you want me to quickly show you what the homes are going to look like, Patrick's not here, so he can't tell me, I can't.
Is that his light pod or our pan?
So, I don't know if you guys can see, or, so, these are the look of the homes, and if you look embedded in the driveways are the Roman numerals, but the homes are extraordinarily beautiful, and I feel that I'm really going out on a major limb to try to do this development, and, as I told you in the past, that I'm 59 years old, and so many people my age are moving out of town, which is very unfortunate, because we don't have the kind of property that they're looking for. And so, I know that I can build these houses and make them beautiful and add to the community. I mean, I've never wanted to do anything except beautify the community, and I think you'd have to argue that my houses have done that over the last 16 years.
Yeah, I appreciate the types of houses. I struggle with, so there's, you, you're saying there's a market for this type of a buyer, right? Who will look for, previously, you mentioned security was a big selling point, but now you're talking, you're mostly focusing on the unattractive view?
Because I'm worried that that's special privilege, but I feel that for people that travel a lot, they're gone 6 or more months out of the year, security is an important concern, and they're moving out of town, because we don't have the housing stock to accommodate that.
Right. I guess, so, just devil's advocate, so, there's 8 buyers, and then there's another 8 behind them, and another 8 behind them. What would you propose to satisfy those buyers? Would it be to continue to create this sort of a gated community?
Oh, the answer to that.
Is that, is that the sort of, think about that, and maybe not in this location, but in another location, in another location, think, how would you, how do you think that would fit with the character of the village?
So, I feel that this property is very unique. There's no other 8-lot situation in Hinsdale, and that's why I'm doing it. I've built, I don't know how many houses in 16 years, someday I'm going to count, but I've never done a multi-unit situation, but this property, I feel like, is a special opportunity that is not available anywhere else in Hinsdale. There's no 8-lot situation, and... There's no eight lot situation and I feel that it's unique. I've had many, many opportunities to build outside of Hinsdale. On rare occasion, I have, but 90% of my business is in the village and I live here, I work here, I'm passionate about the beauty of Hinsdale and, you know, maybe you don't love this house or you don't love that house, but overall the houses that I'm building are improving the look of the town.
And so someone who's lived in, in Hinsdale as long as you have, how do you feel about if there were additional gated communities that were built up?
I think they're locationally specific. So I think if there's one at, you know, Washington and Third, that's a bit unusual, but this is periphery of Hinsdale proper, which I know that's not exactly the def, the border definitions of Hinsdale, but, you know, Ogden to 55th, 83 to 294 is sort of in town and this is periphery in town. So it's a unique opportunity.
And there's a lot of people who live over there, but...
So the developer, I mean, the owner, Kensington, there's no law that, that says they have to all be sold to the same developer. I mean, he could in theory sell them individually to different custom home builders if he wanted to.
He definitely can. He has told me and you'd have to ask him, but that, that's not what he wants to do. He, and he also is passionate about the beauty of Hinsdale and he wants me to get this done because he feels that it's a good choice for the village, that I'm not going to build track houses or inexpensive houses. And it's, it's sort of an odd animal. Like, you know, it's not public knowledge, but I don't really care. I have a contract at $3 million, which is $3.75 a lot, which is on the very low end for Hinsdale property. So it's a very unique opportunity to get a very high-end house with low dollars into the dirt. That opportunity never presents itself in Hinsdale property.
I mean, just to put it in perspective, I mean, so some other developer comes in selling a 1.5 or 1.75 million dollar home. I mean, it's probably a decent, it can be a decent home, right? It might not be a 2.5 million dollar home, but 1.75 million dollars, it's not necessarily track housing, right?
That's true.
Right? It's just a different type of home.
But his other builders aren't at the 1.75. They're, they're low-end builders. His other potential buyers have been...
Yeah, I don't know the specifics. I'm, I'm just saying in general.
Yes, but that buyer has not shown up. The, the only buyer that's shown up, per my discussions with the seller, are not, definitely not in the fabric of Hinsdale. They're, they're development builders, which I'm not a development builder, but this one is like a little gem to me.
And we're not in the industry. What's the term development builder?
A development builder builds multi-unit subdivision type of things. I build individual homes, you know, in the...
You're talking like a 300-unit subdivision?
Like a pulty or something.
Like, that's a perfect example and someone that's knocked on the door.
Like pulty.
And that, that has been someone that's engaged in conversations about this.
But that developer could put up a two-foot-high fence or no fence and sell the homes and put up landscaping.
And the question is, is Hinsdale better with that situation or this situation?
Hinsdale better? What do you mean, what do you mean by that? Is Hinsdale better?
You know, is it, is it a more attractive and more beneficial to Hinsdale to have that?
Is it providing homes to people who can move into the area and afford that home? Is that, is that better for some people?
Yeah, I guess better's a bad word. Depends on perspective.
All right. I guess to focus back on the variance being requested, does anyone have questions with the standards that were being addressed?
So Rob, from my knowledge, the variance per, or sorry, the standard per, per code as it is today for the open wrought iron fence is at, the allowable height for the, the open fence is at four feet?
Four foot in the front and corner side yard, correct. There, there is an exception in the code that doesn't necessarily apply in this case. That would allow it up to five feet if it was open and need to cast aluminum or wrought iron. But that, that wouldn't be applied, that wouldn't apply here. So for an open fence in a front and corner side yard, it'd be four feet.
And the eight-foot gate as drawn here is, is permissible?
It, it, it's now, well, it's six-foot and it's now open by definition.
Understood. Is the gate, is the gate six feet or eight feet high?
Six feet.
Six feet high?
The gate's six feet high and it's now open by definition.
Okay, okay.
You know, I've put a lot of time and money into this. As you've seen, I've spent a ton of money on architecture and I feel that this is critical to my path. So I ask you to consider my request.
Any other questions? Okay, thanks. Motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Member Moberly.
Yes.
Member O'Brien.
Yes.
Member Murphy.
Yes.
Member Lee.
Yes.
Member Podliska.
Yes.
Chairman Giltna.
Yes.
Anyone like to start?
I'd be happy to. I think we should approve this. I think we've, you know, we've batted this around a lot. I think if we don't approve this, these are going to sit here for a long time. You know, the development builder is one option. I don't think you're going to find a lot, they're going to, of development builders interested in this. I think you're going to wind up with a situation like James down at County Line where a developer had it and it, it's taken forever to build the houses on there. People don't want to, people don't want to buy into this, buy one house when none of the others are going up. And I, I think it's going to sit there as an eyesore for a long time if we don't do something to get it. I don't think the property markets are heating up anymore. I think if anything, it's going to be slower to find people that want to come in and build really nice houses and, you know, be the first one of eight and maybe sit there for five years as the only one of eight. I just, I think this is a really minor concession and I'm not worried about the precedent. Next time somebody comes in with an eight lot development across from a parking lot, I'd be happy to give it to them. I, we're not going to, that's not, that's not the kind of precedent we're setting. I just don't, I just don't think it's a, I think it's a good idea to, to, I think it looks good and I think it's a good idea to let this go. And we're not the last decision on it anyway. I mean, if, as plans get more clear, the Board of Trustees doesn't want to do it, they've got plenty of opportunity, right? Board has to do it and, and the plan commission.
That's correct. And, and if the board's not comfortable making the decision at the board level, they've got the ability to refer it to the plan commission.
Right. So that's my opinion.
I think all of those are effective arguments for how we should exercise our discretion if we reach that point. The concern I have is that before we can exercise our discretion, the, all of the conditions, the requirements have to be met. And we've been struggling through several of these sessions now to try to deal with the conditions that need to be shown. It's a unique physical condition and it's not self-created for the, for the impact of the parking lot across the street. That's, nobody had, you know, they, they didn't bring that problem to themselves. That's sitting there, that's the problem. And to address it then as a site issue, they have an effective argument for why it's a unique physical condition and it's not self-created. But once you shift over to the security issue, this whole problem we've had with whether this is going to be a compound, that's when we slip into the, to the area of a special privilege. And that's the thing that's got concerning me. I think we can deal with the problem of the parking lot and the visuals of that situation with what we've been talking about. Border evergreens. I don't think there's been an effective argument made as to why we couldn't have a four-foot wrought iron fence and the border evergreens that would be, and they can be very dense. I think we all have seen areas around the village where people have border evergreens that are very dense. They're visually, they're a visual barrier and they're a physical barrier for someone who, assuming they want to try to crawl over the four-foot fence to try to get through the, the trees, the bushes. And I think that that would provide a visual screening that would benefit the homeowners and a visual appearance for the neighborhood that is much more inviting than a six-foot wall, six-foot brick wall. I, I just can't get past the fact that that's an effective alternative here and that the petitioner, they haven't carried their burden to show that there isn't another, another remedy. So I, I would be a no vote on this.
Any other comments?
Well, I think we all have to speak, don't we?
Oh, you don't have to.
Okay. I want you to do this thing. And the gate, the gate is a major, major, major improvement. I was very happy to see, to see the gate being open. In fact, you've reduced the height and you've made it clear or open. It's this wall in the front. I just wish you, you would, you know, you can still do everything you're doing now and have a beautiful jewel box community without doing, I guess you, you can't speak. I'm sorry, I'm talking to you as a way of explanation for everybody else. I just wish you, we could, I guess my recommendation would be to sub, like John's saying, put really dense evergreens in, in lieu of the wall that's right there along Monroe. I think you'd accomplish the same thing. You don't want to, yes, you're, it's your, it's your choice not to do it or not to do it, but it's...
I would say so.
We're closing the hearing.
Not, not, not right now. If there are enough questions and if we think it would help us clarify, we welcome you to...
I think I'm reiterating the same thing I said a month or so ago. I don't think I'm breaking any new ground.
From my knowledge, if this was to get the requisite for affirmative votes to, to then send to the Village Board, would it then be at the board's discretion to, to approve the plans in general? They would still have final say on what...
Or at all.
Take a complete new look at it.
Correct.
Understood.
Correct.
It's just our recommendation.
Yeah. And they reversed us in the past and they have, usually they agree, but they don't have to. It's, it's their, it's pretty independent of mine in focus.
To clarify, to clarify, you have final authority over the, the increase in the height on, on the wall.
Correct, right.
I mean, I, I've made my opinions known. I, I think there's a big difference between a six-foot white brick wall is very imposing. It's, it's very significant footprint, profile, and I just think there are other alternatives to doing that. And I understand, well, what happens when you move a eight, whatever, a six-foot gate over? How do you, how do you screen that? I, I mean, I, I think those are all things that can be figured out with either landscaping or just a certain type of gate that doesn't require it. I just think, I don't think, I'd love to see an example of a six-foot white wall that looks like this and maybe for everyone to see it, just to show how imposing that would look. Because I do think it would, it would be more significant than what's maybe represented in the drawings. Not intentionally, but, and so for, for those reasons, I just think it's outside the character of the area, no matter where it ends up in the village. There's nothing like this in the village and you could argue there's a reason for that. You might see it in other communities like Oakbrook, but that's Oakbrook or that's Burridge. And I think that's okay if, if their villages encourage that or allow it. I think for, at least for now, for the last, whatever, few generations, this sort of a, this sort of a subdivision hasn't been allowed. And even if it's just a one-off and there's no precedent and there's no other eight property lots like, cul-de-sacs like this, I think even just this one is going to, it's going to stick out. And I just think, and there's no guarantee that if, if you do, if the, if the developer does this, that they'll even sell, but just assuming that it does, I just think something that's lower profile, I, I say wrought iron because it's black and there's a lot of, it's, it's not opaque. You can see right through it. I just think it's just not as imposing. I, I thought Gary's comment the other night, last month, I mean, trick or treaters. You're closing this off, and I know that's sort of a minor thing, but it's just, the idea of it is you're closing this off. I just don't think it's the right thing.
Even now, now we're in the summer, let's still pick up on that. Kids are riding bikes, kids are running everywhere. It's just, we just, this is a community of, we run from street to street and it's, we, I guess we live in, I live in the Monroe District. There's a lot of kids in the area. And so I just get a kick out of seeing people enjoying their, their lives, enjoying their bikes, enjoying their scooters. I just, and the whole subdivision wall thing, just, sorry.
One of the issues with the renderings is that we get a great view into the, the subject property, but we don't get to see how the view is obscured from the inside looking out to Hinsdale or Fort Worth, which is, I think, the underlying point that you're trying to make, you know, to satisfy the criteria, is that you're looking to obscure that view of that unsightly, in your, in your words, un, less than desirable, enjoyable suburban view. I think that, I think that a six-foot tall brick wall really doesn't, doesn't obscure as much as you would think.
I don't have an issue with this. I think you've made a lot of concessions and you've brought the heights of things down. You've opened up the gate. I understand that the gate needs something to open onto, so I relate to that wall. And I drive down Monroe almost every day and I really understand what a unique situation this property is in. If I lived here, this is probably what I would want to shield, all the stuff that you have going on. This is, there is nothing like this in our town. So, you know, in my opinion, it would be great to have somebody that has a wonderful reputation and is willing to improve it, have the ability to do that rather than to see it sit for another decade plus. So.
Okay. Any other comments?
I move that we approve the variance.
Second?
Second.
So, can I just mention one thing? So...
I was just trying to move it along.
No, no.
You have a record doing these really things.
I know, I know, I know. And I'll, and I'll turn, one, one approach is it's yes or no, right? And a no, a yes would then mean it moves forward? A no would mean it would not?
No, you have final authority on the wall. They can choose to modify the design, come up with something that meets code and continue to go on to the Board of Trustees or walk. I mean, it's entirely up to the, the contract purchaser.
Okay. So that, right, that, that could be a next step is if, if this gets denied, then there could be additional options, code compliant on the wall specifically, and then they can then move forward like they normally could.
Or they can ask, ask for slightly different variants, right?
Yeah, you could, they can modify the request, you can approve with conditions, you can reject it outright. They can modify design, come up with a code compliant alternative and continue to move forward. It doesn't, it doesn't die here unless the contract purchaser chooses to walk away.
Right.
So if it's a no vote, is there a time consideration in which they have to reapply? Do they have to wait a certain amount of time to reapply?
With a similar request, yeah, you'd have to wait two years.
Even if they modify it, right? If they're asking for the same type of variance?
It's got to be significantly different and I, I wouldn't feel comfortable trying to opine on how different is significantly different.
Well, who decides if it's significantly different? Is it us?
That would probably be a conversation with a village attorney if that actually arose.
And that's not going to happen.
Okay.
I have a ton of dollars for this.
Okay. That's fair.
I do have, you know, my, if you want to know my walk-away point is I can live with open on Monroe, but the back next to the gate, I'll walk away. If I don't get this done.
Hold on, hold on, hold on. We're not, we're not recording any of this. Just for the purposes of having a recording, you know, having this documented, we need to make to make sure everyone's near a mic, you know, there's open meetings, you know, requirements. So if there's a majority that wants to hear the comments from Julie, we need to reopen the public hearing?
I do, because my, my big issue is right there on Monroe.
I'll move to reopen, I'll withdraw my other motion. I move to reopen the hearing.
All those in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed?
No. Just voice votes, fine.
All right.
So my last statement is, if it has to be open at the street, you know, we go along the street and then we go back and then we're solid. I can live with open at the street, but next to the gate, it's solid or I'm out.
So that's four feet, right?
By that you mean the corner pieces.
The piece that's next to the actual gate.
So we've got.
That would hide the gate.
That hides the gate. I won't do it because it's going to look awful. And yes, we have another one in Hinsdale and they look at a park, I don't.
You're talking about these little L-shaped things here.
I could, I can give up on those.
And those would just be extensions of this.
That's correct. But I will not give up on the next to the gate.
When you say, say the L, it's the section that's along Monroe.
Yes.
And then at right angles to Monroe.
That's correct.
Okay.
But.
And what you're, what you want, what you want to preserve is the wall that runs along the same line as the fence, as the gate itself.
That's correct.
And that's only four feet tall?
No, it's six.
It's a six, it looks like it's shorter than what's on Monroe.
No, it's six.
Oh, it is six feet, okay.
Yeah, and that, and it's, I have a lot of money in this, but I have to sell this and I'll walk away. And you know what? It's an eyesore.
All right. It almost sounds like, I mean, I appreciate your transparency, but I don't know if we need to know your walking away threshold, right? I mean, it's fine that you mentioned it, but I don't necessarily know if we need to be making our decisions based on a developer's, you know, thresholds.
You can say it, but we can't rely on it. Let's put it that way.
Fine.
Exactly.
That's between you and the owner, it's not our business. I mean, that's kind of how the code has to be. Okay, that's fair.
Yeah, it's just unfortunate for our town.
Why can't we rely on it? I mean, if.
Because more or less money is not a consideration that we can, we can consider. It's right in the requirements.
More or less money, I mean, we can, we can decide that this is in the best interest of the community.
Well, under the special privilege requirements, nor merely an inability to make more money from the use of the subject property, that's what I'm referring to. We cannot, we cannot make a decision that, on the basis of whether the property owner is going to make more or less money based upon our decision, and this is the ultimate more or less money here because it's whether the deal goes through or not.
But we can make a decision that, we can make a decision that we think this is in the best interest of the community and that we believe it won't happen without this variance.
But we don't know that.
No, but we can say that that's what we believe. We can.
Individually, we can.
Yeah, I mean, that can be our, just, I mean, it doesn't have to be a collective decision, but somebody, anybody sitting here can decide, I think this needs to happen, I believe it won't without the variance, therefore I'm in favor of the variance. That, there's no reason in the world we can't do that. I mean, we approved that the other day, that addition of that bedroom, going past the FARs and nobody talked about a special privilege, even though it was, I want my kids all here in one, I mean, it's just saying, we can, we can, if we think it's the right thing to do and we're not talking about how much money somebody's going to make and all we're saying is we think this is the best thing for the community and we believe that it won't happen without the variance, that's, that is a perfectly legitimate decision to reach, right? I mean, is there, I can't see.
I think it's, I think it's an opinion because if you think about how this could play out, is just hypothetically, we deny the variance, then it's up to the developer to decide their next step. Doesn't mean that they walk away, right?
Correct.
I mean, just because they, there's a statement that that's what they're going to do, doesn't necessarily mean that that's what's going to happen. It just, I think, it just means that based on the standards and everything that we've heard, right, we're, we need to, I think we need to focus on the variance that is being requested. And it's not necessarily the end of the line for the development. If, if we say, no, can't be six feet, it has to be, it can't be six feet. That's why I was trying to figure out, right, is there some alternative, either in material or height, that would be a further compromise to offer? To the next, that would actually then go, that would be information that the board, the village board would have when they took this.
Once we're talking about the wall that is in the same line as, as the gate, then this is not self-created because there is an entitlement to build the gate. And it follows from the construction of the gate that you need a wall that's consistent with the height and the structure of the gate. That's why I think that part of the wall that's back from the street, running parallel to the street, that's an effective argument, whereas the other parts are not.
Yeah. Can you speak to, sorry, enter the mic?
I'd also like to point out with some of the other issues raised regarding the conditions, if Jay Jordan removes the L-shaped part of the brick fence, I think that removes the concerns regarding, is this being used for security? Because it's only going to be the brick fence along the fence with a gate line, that's it.
I agree.
It will not look as much like a compound. That was really my big issue all along from last time, the last couple of months, is this wall along Monroe. And I think, so I'm, I'm very close to be moving over, you, this last, I guess all Stephen's, if you can get rid of this L shape and replace it with wrought iron or, you know, you don't like wrought iron, okay. See, I know you too well, it's very sad that I know all this stuff, but I could support the variance. It's real, it's just this wall effect along Monroe, I, it's troubled me from the first minute. And so I know the gate has to have somewhere to go, so you're sliding behind.
For that wall with the gate, I think we're ready to close the hearing because it looks like we've got a basis for a decision.
Can I move to close the hearing?
Yeah, okay, we can, yeah, we can close the hearing and then have further discussion.
Okay. Motion to close the hearing?
Second.
Member Moberly?
Yes.
Member O'Brien?
Yes.
Member Murphy?
Yes.
Member Lee?
Yes.
Member Podliska?
Yes.
Chairman Gilton?
Yes. So, John, what you're saying is if the L shape wasn't a wall, you, you'd be comfortable with the six-foot, the six-foot height? Because that's really what we're being asked to address, is the height.
Right. So now, but the, the L shape is now going to be code compliant. And where the variance is needed is for the wall that's running on the, on the line of, the line with the fence.
Setback from.
With the gate.
Setback from.
Yeah, the setback that's parallel to Monroe.
Right, yeah.
And that, since the gate is code compliant, it follows from that, that there needs to be a structure on either side of the gate to allow for the gate to open and close in an effective way. And so therefore, that part of it's not self-created.
I understand your reasoning, but the fence that's in these renderings, the L shape, that's the brick wall and the wrought iron extended out, that's not code compliant right now. That's part of the variance, correct?
Right.
Well, but my understanding was that's what was just withdrawn.
Right.
What is code, is it four feet high? Because this will, I think you still want to make it six feet high. So what, what is.
You're modifying the request, and if I'm understanding correctly, the only, the only six-foot solid wall that will remain is that wall on each side of the gate, it's a retracting gate. So you're going to have a six-foot wall on each side of the gate to receive that, to receive that gate.
Yes.
And then the balance would be six-foot, six-foot open?
And that's code compliant?
No, we still need a variation because you're allowed four-foot open. So you'd still need a variation for a six-foot open fence.
Right, right. This still needs to be, this is.
This is going to be four.
Six feet.
Six feet. So they need the height increase for that fence along Monroe regardless. You're allowed four-foot open right now by right.
The variance is two feet.
Do we need to reopen this again to see whether, whether that's an issue? With the applicant or with us?
I think, I think we start with what's being asked, I think, and then we discuss it and, and I think decide if we think six feet is acceptable. I think, I think right now, I think we can discuss it amongst ourselves until, and there might be a question.
Yeah, I guess. The six-foot wrought iron fence, now you no longer have the screening site issue. The wrought iron fence isn't going to block the view of the parking lot. And that's the issue on which the applicant has the unique physical condition and not being self-created, the existence of the parking lot and the appearance of that. So now we'd have to decide, are we going to six feet for the wrought iron fence as a security issue? And now I think we're walking ourselves back into, from my perspective, back into the special privilege for the security issue.
Yeah.
See, ideally, I'd be looking at a code-compliant wrought iron fence, substantial border evergreens, and then the brick wall adjacent to the, to the gate.
All right. Yeah. That, that would be something that I would be in favor of is, right, is not allowing the, the height increase on the walls coming out from the gate.
Or running parallel to the street.
And then, right, leave it to the developer to decide if, if they can come up with a solution. And the fact that there's a code-compliant gate.
Leads to the, leads to a wall that's high, leads to an authorization of a variance for a wall that's consistent with the height of the gate.
I guess one last question for you, Rob. If, if the structure, the wall on both sides of this gate are as high as the gate, or maybe a little higher, does that require a variance?
It's still a solid wall in the corner side yard and it's, it's, at least based on drawings I had done on Adobe, it's still in the sight distance triangle. So it still needs relief.
Okay, so, but if we, if, for example, one option would be we separate it out and we say, we approve the variance for that portion of the fence, but we deny it for the rest of the fence, the height increase.
You can approve in part, absolutely.
And the, and the height that they're allowed, if they use an open fence on the, you know, the east-west, the L-shaped, is four feet open, two feet closed.
Correct.
So if they wanted the six feet, which is what's listed here, it would either be a two-foot increase or a four-foot increase depending on the type of the fence.
Correct.
All right, okay. Okay. I understand.
So, let me think here. Move to grant a partial variance for the six-foot brick wall adjoining the gate. So moved?
So moved.
Any second?
I move, I guess, yeah.
A second? I'll second it.
I think you, you can't second, can you? You're the chair.
Mr. O'Brien, seconded.
Yeah.
We got it?
Yeah, I got it.
Okay.
Any discussion before we go to vote?
So John, you're the most articulate among us after this. What exactly are we, we kind of flipped back and forth several times, just from my implication and from maybe everybody in TV lands' implication.
Granting a partial variance for the six-foot brick wall adjacent to the, on either side of the gate.
So what, are we saying anything about what's on Monroe now or is that going to be another?
It'll be a separate.
A separate thing, thank you. This guy's sharp, thank you.
Well, you're, you're effectively denying the variance for the rest of it.
Yeah, we're not even moving, why, why don't we, let's, let's, I'd move that we do the variance for the height of the fence on Monroe and the wall. And then see if that goes, and if that doesn't go, we, we do just, we vote on just the wall. Does that make sense?
But the, I understand what you're saying, the variance that would be needed would differ whether it's a brick wall that's closed or a, an open wall.
Right.
Because it's.
Right, but I would say we, we would move, since they've already indicated they're happy to not have this be a brick wall, I would move that we have, that we grant a variance for a six-foot wrought iron open fence, as on this drawing, all the way down Monroe, through the L, on both sides, and then, and I don't know about that, the section that runs east and west, there's a little section, which doesn't trouble me, just whatever that is, however many feet that is.
Eight feet, maybe.
Because that's a wrought, that's a, that's a fence, I believe that's a wrought iron fence that's connecting those two brick walls.
Correct.
Yeah.
Now, there is a gate here as well.
The concern I have with the six-foot wrought iron fence is that that's a pure security issue. That's not a screening issue for the parking, for the problem created by the parking lot. And as a pure security issue, we're back to the Fortress America look. Think about that. A six-foot high wrought iron fence, looks like the, it looks like, we already had a problem early on that this, that this thing looks like the entryway to a jail. And that's kind of what that looks like. That's the kind of thing you have surrounding a penal facility.
So I think at this point, we open for motions. Is there a motion?
Right now, I'm sorry.
I move, I already moved, I thought.
There's a motion on the, from John, seconded by Member O'Brien, to grant a partial variance for a six-foot brick wall adjoining the gate. That's on the table.
So we would need to vote on that before?
Or, or withdraw it.
Or withdraw it.
John and, and Gannon would have to withdraw that. If you want to go back to the board for a different motion.
Okay.
If we go ahead and vote on that, we can still raise the issue about the rest of the fence, or are we done?
No, you can break this into pieces. I thought that's what you were doing, was you kind of breaking this into bite-sized chunks, for lack of a better way to put it.
So we've broken it into pieces. So the first piece is what's, is the motion that's before the board.
And.
You want to do a roll call on that?
And just to be clear, we're talking about everything from that pedestrian gate and the pillar that's there all the way to the pillar on that side.
Correct.
That's abutting the gate. Okay, roll call, please.
Member Moberly?
Yes.
Member O'Brien?
Yes.
Member Murphy?
Right. Yes.
Member Lee?
Yes.
Member Podliska?
Yes.
Chairman Gilton?
Yes.
Okay.
Then I would move that we also grant a variance for a six-foot tall wrought iron fence, which is not as depicted in these drawings, because it would run all the way around the Llets and those other two wings that are now white brick. So, so the motion for a six-foot fence all the way, the balance of what we've just, other than what we've just approved, the rest of it, would move that we give a variance for a six-foot fence.
A variance for what?
Six-foot fence, sorry, wrought iron fence.
Second, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I'm sorry, Chairman, just to clarify, are we specifying material, or are we specifying like cast aluminum or wrought iron?
I'm sorry, as depicted on here, I, I think it's...
Open, what's important, the key word is open.
Right, open, sorry.
Okay, all right. A continuation of what's represented.
Right, right, open, six-foot open fence, right.
Okay. Had a second, any other discussion before we vote?
Well, I want you, somebody try to talk me into this thing, I, I really think the applicant's come a really, really long way, and it's very, I want this to go for them. I just, I do agree with John, though, that the six-foot wrought iron fence may look, make it look too institutional, for lack of a better word, especially right there on, it is an opening into a residential, very high-end residential neighborhood, so how does, how do other folks feel about the six-foot wrought iron fence? Talk, change my mind, somebody change my mind.
Four foot doesn't need a variance, right?
Pardon me?
The four foot doesn't, wouldn't need a variance.
Okay.
We're talking the difference between a four foot and a six foot.
Correct. Right.
So we can do a four foot, without a variance, they can do a four-foot wrought iron fence, and I would still encourage the, the border evergreens that can go as high as 12 feet and be very dense.
Yeah, and I, and I acknowledge the effort and the good intentions for the applicant. I also feel that this board is working hard to come to a compromise, and we have approved a variance just, just before this. I would, I would be in favor of denying, I would, I would be denying the variance for the increase for the rest of the fence.
So they can keep it at four feet?
It'd be code compliant at either two feet closed or four feet open.
Okay.
Any other discussion or comments before we vote? Roll call, please.
Member Moberly?
Tell me again what the motion is.
Oh, the most...
To approve a six-foot open fence.
Okay, to approve it, okay.
A six-foot?
Six-foot open fence.
Which is in variation of the code by two feet of height.
Yes.
Okay. This was my turn.
Roll call?
Member Moberly?
So we're denying, so a, wait, deny?
So that's a no vote?
No, sorry.
Okay. Member O'Brien?
Yes.
Member Murphy?
Yes.
Member Lee?
Yes.
Member Podliska?
No.
Oops, I'm sorry. Chairman Gilton?
No.
That is a tie, my friends.
Three-three?
Yeah.
So it doesn't pass?
Got to be four, right.
Okay. So, next item on the agenda, new business, there's none, old business, there's none, we'll revisit the Ogden case next month. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, we're adjourned.